I'd like to approach the podium, please.
My name is Mark Kansas.
I'm here today to discuss the question of whether commissioners should be having their offices in their district. I guess the macro picture, the big picture is if you're not going to have a commissioner with their offices in the district, why do we even have districts? And am I working here?
Yeah, it's working.
So that's the big question. And once you get past that, if you can, the question comes in as to access once commissioner moves his office away or her office away from their constituents. And then the issue of cost and difficulty once a commissioner moves their office away. There's a slide that I have here that talks about cost. Can you bring that up? Hello? Is there someone back there?
Don't get it.
While they're bringing that up, the issue of how many people come to the commissioner's office, somewhere around three people. I don't know if you can see that. I'll go to the money issue. This talks about the costs involved. The current office at 192 runs about $30,000 a year to operate when someone's there and $25,000 a year to operate when no one's there. So these numbers, by the way, are from the county, the county office, facilities office and management offices. I didn't make any of these up. All I've done is calculations using their information. So if you look at the left, you're looking at what the current cost is. And then the cost on the right of that is to the D3 taxpayers, which is nothing since we've been accessing that office for 20 years. If you then go down a little bit, it'll talk about what the new costs are once you move the office to Viera. So now you've got the cost of $25,000 to operate the existing office, and then you've got the cost of operating the new office, which includes the opportunity of rental. Because once you fill up that space, which is now full in the commission offices, this building, you then have to start thinking about leasing or building new space. So anytime someone takes up space, you then end up with a future need for more space when you grow. Okay? So whether you're using the space right now, which fills a building, or any space which will eventually fill the building, you are going to force a new building to be built at a certain point at another cost. And so the cost of that runs about $25,000. That's $18 a square foot with a $4 common area maintenance. So if you were to rent space around here, that's what it costs. Then if you look off to the right, you're looking at the cost now to the D3 taxpayers. Because now there's another 750 taxpayers a year that have to drive another 20 miles with another two hours of travel or another hour of travel. If you just calculate their wage, I don't know, $20 an hour all in, and then you figure out their gas and their maintenance and their depreciation of car, they're spending another $30,000 in order to access the new office. So between that 30 and the extra 25, you basically have got $50,000 worth of additional expense. So you've got $50,000 worth of additional expense and 15,000 miles more per year, 750 people times 20 miles, oh, 40 miles, I'm sorry, round trip, that the D3 taxpayers now have to do. 15,000 miles, 15,000 miles more pollution, 15,000 miles more possible accidents, 15,000 miles more congestion and all that other stuff, for no particular reason, at the same time hurting access to the people that are accessing the office right now. The office right now at 192 is perfectly located for everybody in the district who goes anywhere across 192, which is everybody. So I mean, it's literally a minute from where you are at 192 and US-1, which is, everybody does that once a week. So you've now really taken an office which is there when someone wants to drop in to an office which is completely inaccessible. And I want to implore the commission to police their own selves in having commissioners stay in their district. We hired the commission to police themselves. Once we vote for a commissioner, if they go off track, we can't do anything about it. You have to do it. You have to self-police. And we're asking you to please do that for us in handling this issue. Thank you very much, commissioners and county manager Stockton. And congratulations or not, but I hope that you do well in your endeavors in the future. And you've served our county quite well, and we appreciate it.
Gail Meredith.
Good morning, commissioners. I think it's an important issue. Our country seems to be in some kind of crisis of representation in that more and more we hear of people who do not, elected officials who do not represent their constituents. Instead, they represent their donors. And this seems to be a plan. This issue shows it, that people, that representatives need to live in their districts. So people who can reach them, some people can't drive. We have terrible public transportation in this county, and the county is very long, and it takes a lot of time to get around sometimes. And in this particular case, some of the commissioners seem to not want to listen to their, the people in their district, and this seems to facilitate that. If you go ahead with it, we're going to be watching this very closely because it seems to be a very bad direction to go in. Thank you.
Nancy Higgs. Randy Foster, you'll be next.
Good morning. I'm Nancy Higgs. I live in South Melbourne Beach. And I sat as the district commissioner in District Three for 12 years. And I just want to share with you my perspective on the importance of having your office in your district. I think our charter outlines that you will live there. It makes logical sense to me, in a follow-up, that you would also work there. It gives you the opportunity, and the public, the opportunity to get to know you and to, for you to get to know them and the situations that may concern them. As we see this conversation today that just preceded this item, it's sort of the poster child of the advantage of local government. And I believe very deeply in local government because the people can be here, you can be here, and it's not just about data. It's about people and their lives. And frankly, the buck stops here. If we want clean air and other things, we have the opportunity at the commission level, along with our partners in the cities, to make things happen. I believe that citizens deserve the right to access their commissioners and to have the ability to talk to them. So I would urge you to accept and to direct the staff to have a policy or a ordinance for your adoption. Perhaps it's just a motion, but to do it officially so that it lives and we have commissioners working with us and living with us in our districts. And we can help you, and you can help us make our community a better place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Randy Foster Acevedo will be next.
Randy Foster, Palm Bay, Florida. You know, when you run for office, you run to represent the people in your district. And to do that, you have to have an office in the district. Now, just imagine Congressman Bill Posey, the eighth in the eighth district, closed down every office in Brevard County to save money. And you could go to, you know, you could email him in Washington DC or visit Washington DC or travel to Washington DC. You have a lot of people in this county commission or banging on his door to open their office back up because he's not representing the people he was elected to do so. And that reminds me of a car tag. I know you commissioners been to Washington DC before, and this car tag looks similar to this. And it says taxation without representation. That's what we have in District Three right now. It's not about Commissioner Tobias, it's about the voters. It's about the voters having representation and not driving 20-plus miles to see their commissioners. That office doesn't belong to the commissioners. It belongs to the residents of District Three. So your commissioner occupies the office. They don't own the office. So I'm asking this commission board, because each one of you represent a district, but you're also the commissioner for Brevard County. And I'm asking you to do your job, pass orders, and make sure everybody represent their district and keep their office in their district. Taxation without representation, that's the way I feel. I'm a resident of District Three, and Mr. Tobias, Mr. John Tobias is my county commissioner. But I don't feel that way because that office that been there since the 80s is now enclosed. I went there a couple of weeks ago. I couldn't believe it. It's a sign on the door. It's a beautiful location. I recommend you go visit it. Pass the orders, ladies and gentlemen. Make sure that this doesn't happen in the future because the next commissioner could come and get elected and move that office back. So we don't need to go back and forth. If a commissioner don't want, I mean, all of you guys and ladies has an office in your district, once you shut that down and just, we all meet here. That's crazy. People in Palm Bay, Melbourne will be raising hell if that happened. So it's about, it's about the voters. Thank you.
Acevedo.
Morning. My name is Pam Acevedo. I live in the South Beaches also. I was very concerned after reading the article in the local news stating that Commissioner Tobias had moved the office. As it is, it took me an hour and 10 minutes to get here this morning. That's just from my home to the parking lot. The parking lot is another, another story. That took another half to three-quarters of an hour. But the point is that if we voted for John Tobias, we expect him to be in the district, to be accessible, and to be able to go to the office and voice any concerns or work with him on whatever he happens to need our assistance with. I think it's admirable that a commissioner moves an office so that they're closer to their constituents, but one that moves his office further away, I question. So I'm just here to reiterate what other people in the South Beaches have to say, and I thank you for your time.
Marcia Booth. Marcia Booth. Are you next? Oh, okay. I put it in the wrong place. Or somebody did. Richard Charbonneau.
Richard Charbonneau, Satellite Beach. Commissioner Tobias is not my commissioner, so maybe I don't really, you know, have a right to comment on this, but I'm going to comment anyways. I'm here at the county commission meeting. Mr. Tobias is right upstairs, and Mr. Smith is upstairs, and Mr. Knox is right upstairs, and Mr. Witten is right upstairs. I find this convenient. I go to the county courthouse to do mediation over there. I come over here to do some things with the election commissioner, and I do a lot of my shopping at the avenues. I don't find this inconvenient at all. I find it very convenient. And I find that a lot of people from the south part of the county come here to do a lot of their business and also to do a lot of their shopping. So I just find this as a convenience. And also, I'd like to dispel one rumor that keeps getting repeated over and over. I've probably been to Commissioner Tobias's office now 10 times, and every time that I went there, I didn't have to be buzzed in. I just walked in the door. There is no buzzer. Never has been one. Thank you.
Pleasure, the board. That's all the cards that I have.
Would it be possible to hear from Commissioner Tobias?
Sure. Mr. Tobias, would you like to weigh in on this issue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to leave this to the discretion of the board. While I appreciate everyone's input, I certainly am responsible to the voters of, and the non-voters of District Three. I saw a couple of my opponents, or at least one of my opponent up here previously. And the only thing I would ask is that if you do make this on financial considerations, and you're more than welcome to do this, and I will abide fully by the board, that you use realistic numbers. The financial analysis was sophomoric at best. There is no value associated with the space that I have in the county commission office. The previous tenant of that office moved to another public building where there was no additional cost incurred. The 750 people, I really wish 750 people would show up to my office, but that has never occurred. I hope that occurs in your office, but I, you know, I assume that when doing a financial analysis, you would at least use realistic numbers when conjuring up figures. The moving expense, which was $4,000, should have been on here. And so, you know, in full disclosure, that should have been included when doing that. And finally, it is my hope that we can look at the value of this property sooner than later and look if we can move it off of the tax rules. My first thought was to find additional space at Palm Bay City Hall and move there. Unfortunately, Palm Bay City Hall is not in the district either. So my first and foremost thought was dealing with the financial aspect of this thing. I greatly appreciate Mr. Shantos for bringing this up for discussion. He had contacted my office at least a couple of times when I was state legislator. I believe we'd gotten both of his issues resolved in a timely manner, and they were done via the telephone. So his office, I mean, his home was within a few minutes of my house, but he chose to call, and we took care of his issues. There's 100 miles that is explained in here. No point in county commission District Three to this office is anywhere near that 100 miles round trip. It's not even 80 miles. I chose the furthest south and didn't even come up with 40 miles. So if you do take that into consideration, I just ask that you take real numbers into consideration as I did when I decided to move this. Ultimately, as we've discussed before, I'm responsible to the voters of the wonderful District Three. But however, in the meantime, if it's the discretion of the board for an office in District Three, I would hope that as time has progressed, we can find an office that does not have an expense associated. I could get a satellite office somewhere where we still can look at the county commission District Three office and looking at getting it on the tax rule. I know there are some parking issues, but it still even has, according to the property appraiser, even with the issue of the parking, a value of about $140,000. So my hope is that we can deal with taxpayers in as fair and as transparent as a manner as possible. But again, I will leave that to the discretion of the board as how you would like to move forward with this issue.
Anyone else have any comments? Commissioner Barfield, you have the floor.
You know, I brought this up at the ethics workshop. And, you know, I know how it is in our district. We have a lot of people. We have a lot of traffic, and it's important that we have a face in the district. It's a good ways from, to Viera for my district. And I'm surprised, I mean, it could even be much further if it's District One. But the point is, I really believe that as a, our constituents need to have as easy access to us as possible. And that is a reason for, as the gentleman said, that we have our own districts. It means you live in that district and you should have your office in that district because that's who you're representing. I, I just think it's, and it's not, and Mr. Tobias, it's not about you. I think it's a decision we need to make as a board for the future. I think it's important to all of our voters and our constituents that they know that they have that access. So I'm perfectly fine with doing it. And you said you have no problem moving, so I really believe we need to do that. I'll hold my motion until the next person speaks.
Commissioner Pritchett, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. I, when we had the discussion before, I really don't want to get to where we're micromanaging each other. I respect the commission up here. Mr. Tobias, I really respect you. You're doing such a great job up here. So my only hesitation would be to ever do something to make you feel like we're pushing you into something. But I really am, I really honor when you make the statements that you've listened to all this and you're listening to what we need to do. Mr. Shantos called me afterwards, and he really opened up my eyes to how important it was because he really wanted to see you, and he couldn't get to you. It took too long. And so it got me really thinking about that. So, Mr. Tobias, I don't know if there's a way that, you know, you could consider moving back to your district in a way. And I really think you did try to save money, but maybe there's another avenue before we move forward with a motion. Because I don't want the motion to be directly related to you, but it does make sense that we do operate in our own district. So I would support a motion for some kind of policy, Mr. Witten, that we have offices in our own district. Even if we're not there all the time, our staff is there. My staff is continually taking constituents in our district. So I think I would like to support that, but I would really rather that you had made the decision first that you were going to move so it's not related to you in any way, sir.
Commissioner Zanardi.
Again, as Commissioner Barfield had stated, we talked about this before, sort of at length during the ethics workshop. And while, you know, I agree, like me personally, I actually moved my office more central to my district, you know? And there was an expense incurred by the county for that space because, as Commissioner Tobias had stated, there was no room at local municipalities for an office after an extensive search. Now, we did get a great, you know, price and a great break on the rent because we are the county. But, you know, I do hesitate to dictate to Commissioner Tobias because he does represent, that's why we do have districts. While my, I may philosophically see things differently than him, I don't believe that it should be within my power to tell him where he should have his office. The Viera building that we're in was designed to house all five commission offices at one time. Now, that obviously changed. However, I mean, someone had it in their vision and in their, had the idea that it made sense to have the commissioners located within one building, so we had access to staff as well. Or we could send a resident or, you know, to go visit with the needs that they may have for that day. So there is value, and I do appreciate that he's trying to, you know, save money. And although me personally, I prefer to be dead center of my district, and my district, if you ever look at District Five, extends from all of Indian Atlantic to southwestern area of Palm Bay. It's quite an odd district. So to find that central location was a bit difficult for me. But again, I mean, he's responsible and accountable to his residents and the voters there, and I don't believe it's, it should be my decision on where his office should be.
Okay, I want to quickly weigh in on this because we are at 11 o'clock. I just want to say that I don't think this is a Mr. Tobias issue. I think he made the decision. He has to live with that decision. His constituents will let him know what they think in three and a half more years. But personally, I think it's an important issue for the county because it is an issue that affects all five districts. That being said, it's important that we either make a decision that going forward, all district commissioners be physically located in their districts, or everybody just gets to decide helder-skelter as we move on, and District Two can move when they want, District Three can move when they want, and how about if District Three wanted to move into District Four? And how about if District Two wanted to move into District Four? I just don't think that works going forward. I think it's important for, doesn't matter whether it's Mr. Tobias or Mr. Jones or Mr. Hyperbole or Ms. Hyperbole. We have to give everybody fairness. That's the issue for me. I don't think it's money. I don't think it's Mr. Tobias. I think it's going forward. I think this is an important policy that this commission can make. So I will entertain a motion if someone wants to make it. If not, we'll move on. Sure, absolutely. Mr. Tobias, you have the floor.
Thank you. And I don't want to put anyone in a tough spot when it's certainly not all that financially constrained. So let me make this to Commissioners Zanardi and Commissioner Pritchett. I thank you very much for your sentiment. While I may agree, I think it would be great if we set a policy that we would do this in a unanimous fashion. And I think we have the ability to do that based on the sentiment that was set. My only recommendation, if we were to go forward, and as I hope we go forward in this direction, is to provide the opportunity for a transitional period in which we could, my office could find something that would not incur any additional expenses and, other than, you know, the cost of the move on the taxpayers of Brevard County. Because I certainly would like to go in a direction that definitely could save taxpayers, you know, as we do move forward. So I would ask for, you know, unanimous support on this one. And I want to thank Mr. Shantos for bringing this forward. It seems like he's much better at passing resolutions than I am. So this certainly shows that citizens have a voice, and I look forward to the motion.
Pleasure, the board. Mr. Barfield.
I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to develop an ordinance and to require that each county commissioner have their offices within that district. And I would also put in that to be effective 60 days. Commissioner Tobias would have to find a location. Is that long enough?
Yes. And I also think it's extremely important with redistricting. Some of our offices very quickly could be found to be outside by the way that we decide to change the line. So that certainly needs to go into that as we direct staff.
And that's always an issue, too. So that's my motion.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Barfield. Do you need any wording? Good.
Let me make sure we have a right. Motion to direct staff to develop an ordinance for county commissioners to have offices in their district within 60 days.
We have a second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes 5-0. Okay, we'll now move into our time certain. And that would be 5A. We're going to have the presentations of our top two ranked recruitment firms.
Just, I just personally just suggest that you ask the Squid Lips people to be patient. You know what I mean? Because there's so many of them.
Yeah. And again, I want to thank all the people that are here regarding Squid Lips, but these were two items that we had to get cleared.
Good morning. The March 7th Board meeting, the Board directed the two top-ranked firms come back and do a presentation or interview with the Board. We have the two firms, the Mercer Group and Renee Narlock Associates, that will be here. I believe I see Mr. Higginbotham in the audience there. Renee is outside. She will not be here while you're interviewing Mr. Higginbotham. And then following the interview presentations, then the Board can make the decision how they want to proceed. We did allow them 10 minutes for their presentation to tell you a little bit about their approach to what they're going to do for the county and with this recruiting service.
Okay, Mr. Higginbotham. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir.
State your name and who you represent.
I'm, as Chair for the Record, I'm W.D. Higginbotham with the Mercer Group. As Chair, members of the Board, I'm going to take just a few minutes. I know we've been allowed 10 minutes. I prepared a two-page executive summary. It was included in your proposal, but I made extra copies in event you didn't. I had it in front of you and with your permission, I can distribute that and I'm going to just cover that.
Sure, absolutely. Just give them to myself and we can pass them out. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the Board, thank you so much for the opportunity to meet with you this morning. Again, as I said, I'm just going to cover some of the salient points that are covered in the complete proposal that I presented to you in late February. First of all, the Mercer Group has been in operation for the past 27 years and operating in Florida for the past 27 years. I maintain an office full-time in Florida, Volusia County. I've been with the Mercer Group for six years, prior to that, over 30 years in the public sector, mostly as city manager, four cities in Florida, one in Brevard County. I will be the project manager handling this project if afforded the opportunity to do so. I handle much of the material and the, I handle all of the interviews of the candidates myself directly. I do all the screening myself. I do that primarily so that I can report to you when I make a recommendation to you as to the semifinalists, and I can answer most of the questions that you might have with candidates not being present for the, again, the semifinalists. Our qualifications and our staffing are set forth on pages one through four on your, the formal proposal. It touches on my background, Jim Mercer. Of course, he's been in the business a lot longer than I have, even city managers. So it's been a while. Understanding the project, the county and the RFP set forth of the items that you wanted your recruiting firm to touch on. Those are enumerated in the cover letter as well as on pages five and six in the proposal in detail on what you would be expecting from your recruiting firm. The pages six and seven as well are the details of what we would do to deliver on those, what you're looking for in terms of, in your request for proposal. Our seven-step process on how we go about analyzing and coming up with the candidates that we present to you are set forth on pages seven through 10 of the proposal. It deals with the position analysis, how we would work with you in terms of developing the job qualifications and a position profile, the recruitment process we follow, the resume review that we do, and also the candidate screening. And as I mentioned before, I do all the candidate screening myself. I personally interview all the candidates that meet your qualifications. I spend no less than an hour with each of the candidates. Most of it is done over telephone, but if they're close at hand, I meet with them personally. In terms of the background investigations, we do that. The background investigation we recommend to be done on the candidates that you choose to interview, and they'll be done and completed before you would meet with the candidates, presumably here in Viera or perhaps another location in the county. The interview process would follow that. I would recommend, as I did in the proposal, that you have a meet and greet. I'll coordinate that or help to coordinate that, whichever way you would like it done, where you'll have an opportunity to meet with the candidates and the community could meet with the candidates in a meet and greet facility. Usually that occurs late afternoon or evening before you would interview the candidates, presumably in a public environment such as where we are today. You may want to do a one-on-one in addition to the public interview. Those are items we can discuss when I meet with you. I'll assist you with the negotiation and the follow-up with the candidates and working with a satisfactory agreement if you choose to have me do so and work with anyone or all of you and perhaps with some of your staff. The schedule I've recommended is on page 11. We are successful in getting candidates and having the process completed usually in 11 or 12 weeks. I've suggested 11 weeks here, and the details are set forth on page 11 of the proposal. We have a flat fee that I proposed to you. That's on page 12. The total amount, including all expenses, is $15,750. It's, if we have to continue, we have to, any advertising and all the advertising we do, again, it's a flat fee. This is, even if we were have to continue it, and that very seldom happens, I will continue to do that until you've selected the candidate of your choice. And again, it's a flat fee. That's on page 12. Page 14, we set forth 10 guarantees, all of them important, but I've kind of enumerated several of them that I think are touching on some of the salient points in the proposal. You know, one is we keep working until we get the candidate you want. We have success. We just don't fail. Well, I shouldn't say that. Nothing's perfect. It's a journey, it's not a destination. But we have a success in our recruitments and it's demonstrated with that. Even in Florida, we've recruited for 17, 18 counties in Florida, some of them multiple times. Right now, I'm doing a recruitment for Collier County. I've recently done recruitments for Polk County, Sarasota County, Hernando County, Citrus County, a couple of recruitments for Hillsborough County. We never recruit candidates, the candidate that you would select for your county manager here, we will never pursue that candidate as long as that person is in your employ unless we had your permission to do so for whatever reason it might be. The candidate may choose to move on, but that would not happen without your permission. We will not recruit from any of your staff within two years of when we place the candidate that would be with you. I typically don't do that anyway. I avoid that. We do not present candidates to you and other clients simultaneously, and it's our policy not to do that so that you're not competing with another public entity for the same candidate. If you were to choose the same candidate as your preferred candidate, obviously the public entity that would move first would have the first choice. Again, that doesn't happen. We do not present candidates simultaneously to more than one client. If the candidate were to leave for any reason within the first two years, by your choice or the candidate's choice, we will redo the recruitment for no fee for the Mercer Group. There would be expenses, they're nominal, their advertising is primarily the expense, but there would be no fee for the Mercer Group. We would redo the recruitment as necessary. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, with that, I will try to answer any questions you want to have.
Mr. Barfield, you have the floor?
That was previous.
That was previous. Mr. Tabai?
Thank you for coming back up here, and I want to congratulate you on, I wasn't part of that committee, but clearly a majority of the committee thought that you were the best choice for this. My one question is, do you have a prior relationship with any members of this Board or any staff of Brevard, of Brevard County?
Commissioner, through the Chair, no, I do not.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Pritchett.
Sir, thank you for coming out. Just a couple of questions. I'm sure as you start working on this, you work through a database of people that have registered with you to find positions. And my question would be is about, how many people do you have in your database that you're going to be looking through to help us find a new county manager?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, we maintain a database, but a database that's over 60 days old is not very useful. Good candidates, anybody that's going to stay in a database looking for a position beyond 60 days, or you may not be considering them as a top candidate for yourself. The database we maintain is typically, we have offices in 13 states. There are 24, 25, I want to say like me, but I don't like to say that. I like to think that I'm one that excels at what I do. I like what I do. But that being said, most of the database I have will be to reach out to the other 20-odd consultants such as myself across the country. And I have a certain amount of a database because of, we do this a lot, whether it's a city manager or a county manager or an aspiring county manager or aspiring city manager, maybe an assistant that's some way that's, somewhere that's ready to move up into the position. So yes, we do have a database. I cannot give you a number, but I will reach out. I've been in Florida since 1984. I came here as a city manager in '84. I'm well-known in the state. I'm very active in FCCMA. I speak at conferences and interview candidates at conferences, one coming up in the May, June of this year in Orlando. I've been very active in ICMA for over 30 years as well. So I hope that answers your question.
Well, I was, I'm trying to figure out is that you have a large pool that you're going to go through? Because you said you would go through them and then directly interview them, and I'm hoping there's not like just 10. So I'm guessing there's thousands. So that's kind of what I was just looking for, is that you have a large number that you're going to begin with as you start your process and individually speak with them.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, I don't have thousands. I won't tell you that. I would tell you without any hesitation, there's probably 20 that come to my mind that would satisfy your needs, and I'll reach out to all of those.
Okay, so you already have an idea?
Sure.
Okay.
We will, when we do the recruitment, we'll get anywhere from 70, 75 to 90 candidates. Brevard County is a very attractive place, and we very well may get over 100. They're not going to all be qualified. I would suspect that probably one-third, maybe a little bit more, will meet your minimum qualifications. And then we're going to come up, you asked for eight to 10 recommended to you as semifinalists. We'll probably come up with 10, or we could have more. I'm not going to split hairs. If I have 12 that I think are really good for you, I'm going to present those to you.
Wonderful. That was going to be my next question. So I like that. And I'm thinking right now, with all the snowstorms going up north, you might get some really good people up there wanting to move to Florida about right now.
We do get a lot of those, and having been in Florida myself since 1984, I know that a lot of folks want to come to Florida, and this is the time of the year. I was in California before, and we used to advertise at this time of the year in, you know, central California, that we drive to the snow, not through the snow. And we got candidates that way. I wasn't recruiting in those days, but there will be candidates that want to come to Florida. I'm very careful to screen these candidates to make certain they're not thinking they're going to come here and retire in the position. Again, I'm very careful about that, and I understand that.
Thank you, sir.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Zanardi.
You answered many of the questions that I had, so thank you, guys. What are, I mean, this is sort of like a fun question for you, I think. What are the attributes, characteristics, and experiences of the ideal candidate that you would present to us? Or what do you think the ideal candidate would be for Brevard County, from what you know about us?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, from what I know about you, I know about the county. I worked in this county for, right, two years. Besides that, I live close by. I live and work in Volusia County. But the attributes you want, I'm going to have to get from you. I will suggest some attributes to you to help you, but one of the first things I would do, if not the first thing, is to meet with each of you as a group or, as a group or individually to discuss the attributes. I will meet with the community, whether it's a business community or residents, with your staff. These are the, where I'm going to get the attributes that fit what you want more than what I think you should have. I'll have some suggestions. I understand your needs where you are in Florida. I was here during Charlie and Francis and Gene, and so I understand your need with emergency management preparedness. I'm very sensitive to that. Perhaps your candidates should know more about your emergency, your emergency preparedness more so than they do the budget at first out of the box if you, especially this time of the year where we, you know, where we're approaching some, potentially some bad times. But we've been lucky for a while.
That's perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Barfield.
Well, thank you for being here.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And I have a couple of questions. One, how many similar positions, city managers, county managers, have you all placed a year approximately?
We place, we make 80 to 100 placements a year. Now, that's executive placements. And I can tell you that in Florida, I've personally placed city managers in Plant City, Deltona, Port Orange, county manager, Citrus County. I'm working in Collier County. That's not, that's not a manager. Sarasota County was county manager. We have placed nearly 200 city and county managers in Florida during our tenure. There's a list of placements of county and city managers. If I put them all in there, all the other positions, it's thousands. There's a couple of hundred, but that's nationwide, sir. The, those for the county manager positions, there's 18 counties that we've placed candidates for, some of them more than once. And that's not even counting the city manager.
Another question along with that. What is your number of turnovers within the first, that first two years?
It's very slim. I, I've been with the Mercer Group for nearly seven years, nearly six years, and I've not had anyone that I've had to replace. I've had one that left early. It was actually, it was an internal auditor for, for county clerk. But I would have been there to work for them, but they had somebody else and the candidate wasn't a good fit. But, but other than that, I'd have to say I've not experienced any. It doesn't happen very often. The candidates are screened quite well, and they're not here, they're not transient, hopefully they're not transient. That's our intent, not to present somebody to you that's going to be transient.
Okay, fine. I would like to ask you, do you handle public and private placements?
We do, but our focus is in the public sector. It's very little private sector. I have a request right now for a university president. That's a tough recruitment. Somehow I've been labeled as the, the person for upstate New York. They love getting people from Florida to do recruitments for the county health officials. But that's this- from Florida to do recruitments for the county health officials, but that's as close to the private sector because we look for candidates from the private sector for positions such as that, but we don't get a lot of requests for private sector recruitments, but we would do it upon request.
Another question I have, would anyone be able to apply? In other words, this becomes public knowledge, you have your recruiting base, but suppose Joe Schmo from Kokomo?
Oh, absolutely. Mr. Chair, when I meet with you, you may want us to reach out to the private sector for someone that has private sector experience, or maybe someone that's in the private sector. It's pretty tough to move into the top position in any public position as a county manager or a city manager with no public sector background. Understanding, especially in Florida, the sunshine laws, the public record laws, now granted you have your county attorney to assist that person, but there's going to be opportunities that they need to know, where they're going to be working with one or more of you on issues, and they need to understand, and they're not going to have the attorney sitting there with them. So yes, sir, we can go out to the private sector, but I would caution you against entertaining somebody from the private sector that has no public sector experience.
The other question I have for you, considering that each county and city, whether it be Florida, Georgia, San Francisco, or California, is quite unique.
Yes, sir.
And I would certainly put Brevard in that category. We have 67 counties, and I would suggest that each of the 67 have their uniqueness. How will you get a feel for the personality type that you think would fit in this situation that we have here? I mean, you have, there has to be some assessment going on, you can't just say, okay, well, we're just going to get 10 people to apply. Out of those 10, maybe three may fit here, so that's my question.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, I'm going to meet with you, and I'm going to spend as much time with you as you want me to. I'm going to meet with the community, whomever you want me to meet with, whether it's a business and/or residential parts of the community, to get a feel for this community. And I can't say that my two years here as a town manager, you know, that I'm all-knowing about what you're looking for, that's just not so. What you may be looking for today may have been different 10 years ago. But I'm going to get that feel from speaking with you. I'll have questions, I will interview the candidates. Obviously, I'm not going to be doing the talking, I'm going to be doing the listening, because you listen to someone speak, answer questions you have for an hour, you learn a lot about those candidates, and I'm going to know a lot about what you're looking for in this community. I'll spend the time necessary to get a feel for what you're looking for. I will, I pride myself in understanding what the communities are looking for. I've been a city manager in Florida in four cities, and economic development director for North Central Florida, so I have a feel for the communities in Florida, and all 67 counties, the rural, whether they're rural or urban counties. And we've got 400 cities, not all have city managers, in fact, not all of the counties have county managers either, but I could ramble on, sir, but I hope I answered your question.
You answered my question, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, Mr. Higginbottom, thank you for your presentation.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you so much. I take great pride in what I do, and if afforded the opportunity to serve you, you will not be disappointed, in fact, I'm confident you'll be quite pleased with the candidates we'll deliver to you, so, thank you so much. I'm going to step out so we're naked and come in.
Yes, please.
I do, and I think I got the color wrong today as far as my attire, I think I should be in orange, right? Good morning, everyone. Good morning. Chairman, how are you? Commissioners?
Thank you. Well, we'd like to hear what you have to say.
Okay, I'd love to share it with you. My name is Renee Narlock. I'm the President/CEO of Narlock and Associates. We're a public sector executive search firm. I've been in this business for many years, probably close to 25 years now, primarily focusing on public sector, recruitments, senior management, senior leadership. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to be here, I really do appreciate that, and share with you what we offer and what we can do for the county in the way of recruiting the next county manager. As I mentioned, I'm the President/CEO of the company, and I have been recruiting for many years. My firm has actually been in business since 2014. Prior to that, I was with another public sector search firm, we had a west coast office in California, east coast office in Tallahassee, and when the owner of that firm retired, I just went into business for myself, it was pretty seamless. I am out of Tallahassee, my primary office is in Tallahassee, and I have a secondary office out in Georgetown, Texas, which is out in the Austin area. As I mentioned, my focus is public sector. I've done hundreds of searches in the public sector over the years. My current projects that I'm working on include city manager of Coral Springs, which is down in Broward County, city manager of Dunedin, which is over in Pinellas County, and then a couple of other public housing President/CEO recruitments that I'm doing up in the Virginia area for Arlington and for, I'm sorry, for Alexandria and for Portsmouth. As far as past projects, it's a long list. I have recruited in Florida, I've recruited nationwide, county managers, city managers, department directors, you name it, the gamut. In Florida specifically, in the last probably five years or so, I did a county manager for Alachua, county manager for Lee County, county manager for Pasco County, and then the most recent one was Palm Beach County, which was about, I think, probably two years ago. I know my way around Florida, I'm a native of Florida, I've been stomping around the state for many years, and really do have an appreciation for this particular area of the state and what you have to offer. We have a process which was outlined in our proposal, that's a proven process, it'll get us from point A to point B in a successful search, really scouring the nation, if you will, for talent, and bringing you some really high-level, high-quality individuals to compete for this position. As a search firm, this is a great search for me. It's a great location, it's a great organization, it's a great situation. Some places, it's not quite like this, meaning that their past manager was fired, or there was some different kinds of issues going on. Here, it's just a great opportunity, it's just a great opportunity to get the right person to come in and just pick up and move forward for the organization. So I'm hoping to get a nod on doing this search, it would, we certainly have the staff to do it, we have the time to do it, and we're ready to go at your timing, however soon that may be. In our proposal, we also included a timeline. This does take a little while, but once we get started, which is when I come to meet with you and do kickoffs, the clock is started, and we build momentum, and we have to keep that momentum. We can't get bogged down, and we can't go off to the side here, we have to keep it moving forward, that's just a good process. And of course, I'm sure you're interested in doing that, knowing that you have a timeline too internally for replacement. As I mentioned, we're ready to start when you're ready to start. We have, again, seasoned staff and the ability to carry this from start to finish. We understand the nuances of doing a recruitment, we understand open meetings, we understand public records, we understand all of those things along the way that are going to be very important to having a successful search. My role is to bring you great talent. I don't tell you who you should hire, I just listen to you from the get-go and hear what you're looking for, and then I go out and I scour and I find that talent. And then I bring those folks back to you. My goal is to make your decision really hard, meaning you have several people that you like, you have several people that could do the job and do it well, and then you as a group have to come to a consensus and pick who you believe is the best candidate. So my primary goal is to make your decision very difficult. I do always work to make sure that I bring a diverse group to you, and that means, that means a lot of different things, whether we're talking about racial diverse, diversity, gender, experience, maybe we have someone that's, you know, been an assistant at a large county and is ready for this, but never been a county manager before, maybe we have a seasoned county manager, maybe we don't, maybe if you give me the direction that you want someone who's never had government experience, then, you know, that would be another end of the spectrum, if you will. But I take my marching orders from you, I bring you candidates that meet what you're looking for, and then, you know, it comes down to helping you navigate that process and make a decision. With regard to the process itself, I have a standard structure, but when it actually comes down to the details of it, of, you know, are we going to do interviews this way or this way, and how are we going to structure this, again, I look to you to give me direction, I work for you, on how you would like to see things structured as we go forward. But we've been doing this, as I mentioned, a long time, and we're certainly interested in working with you. So that said, I think I'm going to turn it over to you in case you have questions for me. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Hi, thank you for coming.
Sure, thank you.
A question, just curious, do you, you said that you scour the nation? You try to find the group that you think's great talent for us, how do you find that? Do you have a large database you start with, or, I'm just real curious how you go about determining that you found the great talent and how you find the great talent?
There's several pieces to the process, and what I don't do is I don't just look at my last search and whoever didn't make it is now your candidate, so we don't do that. We start from scratch. We use all the resources that we have in place, which would include a database, again, I've been doing this 20-something years. I'm very connected to different associations and organizations such as ICMA, which if you are a professional city manager, more than likely you're a member of that association, and it's a very active association. So between my database, between my connections, my network, there's added elements to it, and without getting too far in the weeds, let's say I come sit down and I meet with you, and your priority is a particular type of development for the community. I will go and find what communities have been successful in that particular area already, and then I will seek out the talent that was responsible for that, or that was involved in that. So I kind of come in the back door of trying to find people that, you know, might not be looking at an ad, they might not be, you know, watching the ICMA list of positions that are open, but I know they've done this, and I know they're already qualified, and then my job becomes to actually recruit them, to draw them to this community, and to market you, and to market this organization to them. So again, that, along with some other things like that, make up a really good, solid, interesting pool of candidates when we get to the interview table.
Do you have hundreds in that field of candidates, or thousands? How many people are you going to start looking through as you start looking for our county manager?
I would say, the first notification would probably go out to 1,500 people.
Okay.
The really targeted group will probably be around 150.
All right.
And then I would expect us to, and I can never guess this, right, but, you know, 50 applications, of which I would have an interest in talking to probably the top 15.
Okay.
And whittling it down, and then making a recommendation to you about the top seven to interview.
Okay, do you do it nationwide?
Yes, ma'am.
So you're going to be looking all over the nation?
I am. You never know when someone is, you know, maybe familiar with the area, maybe grew up here, maybe went to school in the region, and they're out in Tacoma, Washington, or, you know, their career has taken them far away, and my call is the perfect timing for them to come back to this region, or to home, or to family, or what have you. So while I will look in Florida, and I will scour Florida, and regionally, I just, I like to throw the net far and wide, because that's, you know, that's where a lot of surprises are. And again, I want to make sure that we get the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Zanardi, you have the floor.
I ask this question, and I think you would probably answer it the same way to the gentleman before you saw him, and I just change it just a little bit.
Sure.
In your experience with recruiting of executives and city or county managers, what do you find the best combination of a candidate is, say, for a place like Brevard County? I mean, if you could choose the ideal candidate, like what characteristics would you look for, just based on what you know about us so far?
I would want someone with some energy, someone who could be the face of the organization and connect with the stakeholders here. I would want someone who certainly is sound in budget and finance, you can't ever get away from that. I would probably look more on the economic development side of kind of an added background, an added experience, if you will, maybe they came up through that track. You know, I'm not going to say I would look for just county, people who've worked for counties, because I think, I like to see people who have worked for public and private, and people who have worked for cities and counties, and it's a blend, because that tells me that they are able to go from one environment to another successfully. That's a fluidity that I think is important for a candidate. Outside of that, you know, it would just really, I think someone who just brings a lot of leadership, that's always, you know, needed, that's what this job is really about. And there's a lot of staff here, a lot of activity here, and I think a strong leader. Beyond that, I know we have a job description, but I, you know, that's one of the questions that I will ask you too, in my kickoff meetings, because I need to make sure that the person you select is prepared for what's coming, meaning five years down the road, maybe 10 years down the road, depending on your cycle of evolving as an organization. I would look for someone who's a visionary, because you have to have it, to know where you're going and to know how to get there. I would look for someone who has worked for several boards, meaning they didn't just work and have, you know, a four-year time while their commissioners were serving their one term, and didn't make, when it changed over, they didn't make that transition. Again, I need to know they can transition and they can be fluid, because this will change, the makeup here will change, and I need to know they can survive that, meaning they're prepared to have new faces sitting here, and what that means as a manager. Beyond that, you know, I think really, this is no small feat for a manager. This is a large, complex organization, and they will have to have some substantial experience functioning in an organization at that level, for me, to really feel good about them as being a candidate here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Mr. Barfield.
Thank you for being here.
Hi, Commissioner.
A few questions here. Of your, say, on the last two years of senior-level people that you recruited and placed, about how many of them were not really looking for a job versus those who were flooding your mailbox with resumes?
That's a good question also. I would have to say that the way that I approach a recruitment is I hit it from every angle. You know, I'll advertise, but then I'll reach out to people, and then I'll, you know, do some more strategic finding of people. By the time I get to someone, they've probably, at that point, seen it in an ad, got a call from me, got an email from me, and, you know, and I'm calling again. So sometimes it's a little bit hard to track of, you know, how people heard about it or what have you. However, I do, on a very regular basis, hear candidates say, "I am not, I was not looking for a job." I get brochures all the time, but yours happened to come across my desk, caught my eye, and I looked at it, and I really do think this could be the one." And I hear that a lot. And the reason, again, is because I'm so strategic about who I go after. I already know it's a good opportunity for them, I just have to help them figure that out. So I would probably say about half of the folks. If, you know, I If, I, you know, I can't keep someone from applying for the job. It's open, and whoever wants to apply does. I do have people who apply for almost everything I do. That's not a good strategy. I need to know that you understand this is a good fit for you, and that you're committed to this process, and that you have thought this through, and, you know, when we get to the finish line, this, this could very well be it for you.
Along that line, too, with, how many positions, say, over the last couple of years, have turned over within that two-year period of...
I don't, I have a guarantee in my proposal. I haven't had to exercise that guarantee in years, and I mean 15-plus. And even in that situation, there was a gentleman who had taken a job, moved with the anticipation that his family would come after school was out. They had seniors in high school, that's always a big deal. And in the meantime, an elderly parent became ill. So family was back taking care of an elderly parent, and it rocked on and on and on. And finally, after eight months, he said, "I have to go home." You know, life is woven up into all of this stuff, and, and there are times that that happens. And you can best prepare, you know, in having those discussions upfront. One of the questions I ask candidates is, what are your long-term and short-term career goals? Because I want to understand, and what I usually hear is, you know, "I'm planning to be working another 15 years." You know, I'm planning, so they kind of, they, you know, without me asking them specifically, they give me, you know, what their picture looks like. And I need to make sure that it fits with what you're looking for, too.
Okay, good.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Tobias.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple quick questions here. We'd be remiss if we didn't talk about the fee, and appreciate you doing that. And I only saw the two tops, so I can't speak to any of the four. And I don't know if you saw your co-applicants package, but at best-case scenario, you're more than 45% higher. Now, my question is, is what do you bring above, you know, what other applicants? And I don't know that you've seen that. And then the other thing that was, I don't want to say troubling to me...
Sure.
But I read pretty closely, and it says, "Expenses are estimated to not exceed $6,500." So I read that, that they could go higher than six, otherwise it would say, "Expenses will not exceed." So, you know, the best, I'm going with best-case scenario.
Sure.
So that's the first question, the 45% higher, and will it, how often does it go above the expenses estimate?
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to talk about expenses first. That needs to be rewarded, because it, it will not go higher than that. As a matter of fact, I don't anticipate it will go that high. That $6,500 is a standard amount of expenses based on past history. But a lot of my searches, I'm getting on a plane at least three times. And I don't know if you've ever flown out of Tallahassee, but it's rather expensive. So I'm not expecting us to reach $6,500 on that expense cap. However, there is a good possibility that you may in fact ask me to come on-site for additional visit. If we go through interviews, and there's just not a single candidate that really stands out to you, maybe there's two or three, you may say, "We need to bring them back again for another round." So, so that gives me some cushion in that expenses. But I do, I will make sure that our agreement says it will not exceed $6,500, and that's what that proposal should say. With regard to the professional fees, I'm a little surprised that, that, and I don't know if you were talking about the combined total being 45% more?
Correct, correct.
Okay, all right. The professional fee itself, I think, is, is pretty competitive, I would hope. It, I, again, in comparison to some of other recruitments that I do, it's probably maybe a couple of thousand higher than what I would do if I were doing a department director. And the reason why is when I'm working with an elected body, the recruitment is a totally different process than when I'm just working with, say, the county manager to hire the HR director. There's a lot of scheduling, there's a lot of public meetings, there's a lot of, just a lot of interaction. So I think that's probably on the top end of my professional fee. I'm, I'm a little curious now, I need to look at my proposal to make sure there wasn't a typo in there, because, again, I really thought that we were probably more competitive. However, I will answer the question. The answer to the question is, we are very good at what we do, and the talent that you will see will demonstrate that. I think we have a reputation for that. I've had candidates that have been part of a pool before, who didn't get the position, but came back to me and said, "I was proud to be in your pool of candidates, based on the other candidates that were there." You will get top-shelf talent from us. I love to find rising stars, I love to find hidden gems, and, and I just love to bring top-shelf, professional folks to you. So I think that's what my references would say to you, that, that they were really impressed. My searches turn out to be a real educational process, because you have so much talent that comes in, in the interview process. You begin to learn about, you know, what others are doing, or, you know, things that, you know, just are, are very valuable to you as far as informational purposes. So it takes on a whole different role. But back to answer your question, I'm very comfortable with the proposal, and I, and it, we do, we do bring great talent, so I think that's the difference.
One more question. Thank you. And when, when we voted in favor of hiring a firm, 30 seconds later, your resume was, and it may be exaggerating, 15 seconds later, your resume was up here on the dais. So my question to you is, do you have a relationship with, prior relationship with anyone on the council, or any, you know, anyone else? I'm just trying to connect the dots, and literally 15 seconds later, your, your resume was on our...
I have, I have never met any council person here. I, when I did the Alachua County manager search, your county manager was involved in that process. That's the only interaction I've had, and that was pretty limited, as far as making a recommendation in Alachua County, and that was many years ago. So I can't really beyond, maybe that connect the dots for you. I'm glad to hear it, but I don't, I don't know. You know, I do rely on my reputation, and, and, you know, I'll tell you, there are three searches I'm doing right now, that I got a phone call, and they said, "We've heard about you." I think there's a good connection of human resource professionals in this state, you know, very active human resources professionals. And they know who they like to work with, they know, you know, who takes the burden off of them as far as a process like this, because it, it does take a lot of time and a lot of effort. So it could have, could have come from any number of people. Thank you.
I would like to ask, do you do private placements as well as municipal placements?
Primarily public sector. What happens is, I'll work with the board, such as yourself, you'll serve on a community nonprofit board also. And when they need an executive director, because of the work I did here, you'll put my name out there. So the private stuff that I've done has been primarily nonprofit, and it's from, again, a referral or a connection somewhere. But my lane is public sector. I will tell you, there's some of the brightest people that are, you know, in, in this field that I have met over the years. I'm constantly amazed. And there's just been enough of a demand, really, for that specialization, and that's kind of where I've stayed.
So that brings me to my question. Can anybody apply?
Yes, sir.
Somebody from St. Louis that just happens to have an interest, and hears about it?
Yes.
Can they contact you and say, "I'd like to be in that pool"?
Yes, yes. We open up my website for candidates to apply. It's, it's very user-friendly, there'll be no frustrations about it, and it's, anyone can apply for the job.
Would you have a project manager who would be in charge of the, of the recruitment?
I, I'm your recruiter. I will handle this project. I have staff that, again, if it's a department director position, I would, you know, they typically handle those. But for an elected body, for it to be open and public, and, and all that it's going to take to make sure that we get from point A to point B, I will be your person. I will be here for every onsite meeting. I'll come and meet with you on, at the kickoff, to get all the information about what I'm, what I'm looking for beyond the standard job description, talk to you about everything under the sun, whether it's salary, possibility of internal candidates, you know, everything we need to talk about on the front end. I'll be back to recommend candidates to you. I'll be back again to facilitate the interview process onsite with candidates. And then I'm in the process till the very end, including assistance with negotiations if, if needed, with the final...
And my next question would be, since, since each situation is unique, every county is unique, every city is unique, how do you assess the flavor of the uniqueness of Brevard County versus XYZ County?
You know, I think I have just kind of, over the years, perhaps developed a sixth sense about that. I listen a lot on the front end. I will even ask you if there's others that you want me to meet with, maybe Mr. Whitten, maybe department directors, maybe community members. You know, I find out the scope of where you want me to reach out to and to listen to everyone. I get this 360, I call it, on the community. And, and once I have that, then I kind of go beyond that, about, you know, what is, what is the bigger picture here? What is the longer vision here? And then I come back to you, and I say, "This is what I see, this is what I, what I'm hearing, am I spot on?" And I make sure, because you're, you're in a day, every day. I come back to you to make sure that I have that clear picture. And I will say that's another one of, I think, the elements that has made us so successful, is that snapshot on the front end. Because if I have any questions, I'm going to get answers, and that, I don't leave it to chance, I don't assume anything. I really drill down and talk to you about what are the challenges you're facing, what are the opportunities here, you know, what do you see as hurdles for someone coming in at this point in time? What's the vision for this organization? You know, do you know that? Do you, do you have a good sense of that? And just the dynamics, the culture of the organization? I just ask pointed questions that, that help me to frame that, to make sure that I really understand what a good fit is for this organization. Because I'm not interested in bringing somebody here that doesn't fit this organization. It doesn't, it doesn't profit them, it doesn't profit you, it doesn't profit me, it just doesn't work. You'll be doing this again in a year or two, and we don't need that. We need, we need to make a good choice here, there's an opportunity here, and we need to seize that, and we need to make sure that we have a really strong fit.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you for your time.
Sure. Again, thank you for the opportunity. If you have any other questions or need information, we're just a phone call away.
Great.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask staff, in the interest of time, I'd like to move forward, I'd like to put this aside, the decision-making of this to the end, so we can just take as much time as we need. And that way, we can move on with the Squid Lips. Does staff have any thoughts on that?
I'm sorry, I was getting Mr. Higginbotham's attention. Could you ask me?
He's just going to delay voting.
Delay voting, okay, that'll be fine. The only thing with that is, both firms are here, so they can come back, listen to the open discussion, otherwise, they will, if they leave, they'll miss that discussion, but they don't have to stay. So it's just one thing to consider, that if you vote now, they would hear your discussion and comments. If it's later, they could stay and wait for that later.
Well, I think if they, if we, if we have the comments and questions and statements later, they can still hear that.
Oh, sure, it's public.
And I just think that it would give us time, without any time constraints...
Sure.
To just hash this out.
Okay.
And we can just, does that work for you guys?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So, okay, so now we're going to get back to Squid Lips. Ray, thank you, thank you all for your patience. My next card is Dean Stewart. Dean Stewart.
In the interest of time, I'll just state that I support Squid Lips, the Yenner Lagoon and Jobs in Brevard County.
Okay, thank you, thank you, sir. Beverly Bishop. Your Beverly Bishop, no Beverly Bishop, Beverly Bishop left.
Ben Bishop.
Ben? Oh, it looks like Bev. Okay, Ben, we'll try you. Sorry about that, sir.
I appreciate it, and I'll be real short here. I have not specifically read the mediation agreement, but from what my understanding is, is that there are multiple controls, checks, and balances written into the mediation agreement that restrict sound levels, operating conditions, that I think would make it plausible for everybody to give this a second chance. One thing I can say about Mr. Underill, and I've worked for him for the better part of 13 years now, is that when he shakes a hand and he makes an agreement, he stands by it. And I don't think this would be any different. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Sopley and Gary Shetzel will be next, so if you'd like to come up and have a seat in the interest of moving things forward.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, yes, good afternoon. I come before you today to express my vehement opposition to this mediation settlement agreement, and to expand on the reasons why. This agreement is grossly negligent in reflecting the 1,800 pages of findings of fact and the three previous denials. This agreement doesn't reflect the integrity of the presiding board at the time of the denials, and is challenging the integrity and knowledgeability of the sitting board today, which consists of three new board members. Thank you for your service. For references purposes, our immediate residential community from 20th Street to 24th Street consists of 13 single-family homes, 11 multifamily units, and one condominium property of 34 luxury units under development. This community has contributed over $1 million in tax base to Brevard County in 2016. Magnolia Bay, 57 units, paid $285,000 of that. That's substantial tax base. Since the purchase, Mr. Underill's taxes were in arrears, but as of today, certificates were bought and paid for by private funding. Who's to say that, how will he obtain the funding to adhere to this agreement and pay for stormwater management? Should this agreement get approved, our values will decrease. We're not asking for the restaurant to close. We are only asking that patrons, and we are asking that patrons can enjoy the beautiful sunset on the deck. We are asking that the capacity be brought back to the original capacity for dining, which is 60, and for the music venue to abide by the noise ordinance, which is compatible with dining music. That's 70 decibels. I take exceptions to Ms. Rosanka's comments on speculation. We lived this nightmare for five to six weeks. We've, we've, our lives have been threatened, our property use has been threatened, and for all the reasons of the zoning code, that's the reason why they were shut down. The comprehensive... The comprehensive plan for this residential community will irrevocably be destroyed. The board has taken an oath to protect the citizens of Brevard and has sworn to uphold the code of ordinances and comprehensive plan put in place. And although our tax base is, in our immediate community, may be a drop in the bucket to some, we too are entitled to our use of property, our safety and protection of our investment and our livelihood. Therefore, respectfully, I ask you to stand up to these unethical business practices and deny this agreement. Thank you.
Gary. And Randy Burner, he'll be next.
My name is Gary Shetzel. I live at 8903 Laguna Lane, Unit 402, Cape Canaveral, Florida, 32920. I am in favor of Squid Lips and any person that wants to go into the restaurant business. It's a tough business, and you've restricted this person, this property, long enough. How do you expect the person to pay taxes when they can't operate their business? You've taken also employment out of the region by not having this business operate. And I feel that it's long enough, you've come to a mediation agreement via the laws in place, and the mediation agreement should be upheld. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Mark Holloway will be next.
My name is Randy Burner. I live at Magnolia Bay, 2012 Julip Drive, Number 208. And I completely endorse and support the viewpoints of my neighbors about this matter. It's often difficult to swallow why we're even here chewing on this thing again, but we are, because it's allowed. Most of my neighbors have already spoken the same feelings that I have in my mind, but I'd like to address just one particular issue that I think I'm qualified to speak on, and that's the impact that your decision may have on the protective service community, primarily law enforcement. I feel I'm qualified to speak on that because I was a member of the law enforcement community for 31 years. I'm now retired, and after being an eyewitness to about five to six weeks of his business model, I can tell you that there will be a drain or an additional need for resources from the Brevard County Sheriff's Department to deal with the matters that are going to occur as a result of his not catering to a 45- to 65-year-old group. I have a printout from the Melbourne Police Department. Now, this is a little dated because I received this information back early on when we were first discussing this matter. Excuse me. But Melbourne Police Department, in 24 months, from 10/1 of 14 to 10/24 of 16, had 72 incidences that were logged into their computer-rated dispatch system. In his location at Sebastian, in 34 months, the Sebastian Police Department had 117 incidents logged into their computer-rated dispatch. So I think it's quite obvious that if he's allowed to continue with this entertainment venue, that it's going to cause problems and it's going to require a law enforcement response. At previous testimony, Mr. Underhill said to you that the problems that he mostly has with his Melbourne location are from panhandlers. Well, this document clearly states that that's not the case. Yes, there are some calls for service regarding panhandling, but there's everything else, too. Fights, drunken disorderlies, thefts, assaults, it's all right here. And I could probably run another six more months and we're going to have the same type of situation. So, with that said, I'm asking you to respectfully keep in mind the impact that it's going to have on the protective service community, should you allow this agreement to go forward. Thank you.
Mark Holloway, Heather Couch will be next.
My name is Mark Holloway. I reside at 2012 Julip Drive, Cocoa Beach, Florida, adjacent to Squid Lips. I totally agree with what my neighbors have been saying, and I'd just like to add a few points. Quiet enjoyment, we've talked about that, residential community, we have a rightful expectation to that. They talk about sound barriers, they talk about noise monitoring. I worked in submarine sonar acoustics for 33 years, and I will tell you, in an open area like that, and they're going to want an open area because of the view of the lagoon, there will be some sound dissipated within the noise barriers, but there will also be a funneling effect, and that will be out there, believe me, it will be. Now, as far as the fines for this, the attorney spoke of stringent fines, $500, the first offense, cost to do a business. And do you have to pay it? Not necessarily. Are you going to get fined again? Probably. There's no tax certificates for that. And as far as keeping the promises, there was not much adherence before. I have not seen that, or you do not expect in the future. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Heather Couch. David Couch will be next.
My name is Heather Couch. I live at 2022 Julip Drive, Magnolia Bay. I have lived at Magnolia Bay for almost six years. When we purchased our home, Lobster Shanty was right next door. We enjoyed their venue for lunch and dinner and music on the weekends. When we learned that Squid Lips would be the new owner of Lobster Shanty, we were initially delighted. As a former restaurant owner myself, I wanted only success for Squid Lips, and I was a good customer at the beginning. But then, our quiet environment changed drastically. The demographic that we were told by Squid Lips would lean older in age, as is consistent with our surrounding community. However, there was a much younger clientele. With it came crowds, noise, parking problems, and safety issues. Our nice restaurant had become a bar, music, and party venue. I feel that Squid Lips has totally misrepresented Magnolia Bay residents, Snug Harbor residents, and all of the condominiums and private homes in the surrounding community. We welcome a restaurant, we would love a restaurant, one that would perform due diligence, complying with zoning ordinances, permits, and regulations. I respectfully urge you to vote against this mediation agreement. Thank you.
David Couch. Robert Love will be next.
Yes, my name's Dave Couch at 2022 Julip Drive, Unit E102. I'd just like to say that I'm going to have 40, if you vote for this, I'm going to have 48 hours a week of listening to music, either to my choice or not. I realize you folks are not going to hear it, and the orange people are not going to hear it, but I'm going to hear it. So I don't particularly like that. Secondly, from a fiscal standpoint, I see no advantage at all to this county of Brevard. With the expenses that Randy was talking about with the police, with the loss of tax value that Susan was talking about, I see no advantage at all to the county to pass this. Thank you.
Mr. Love.
My name's Bob Love.
Chris, Chris Conine, he'll be next.
2001 Julip Drive, Cocoa Beach. Before I talk about my thoughts on the zoning issue, I want to explain the problem in my words also. I live up north, I come back and forth, my wife's down here all winter, and my friend, Mike Parati, he also comes back and forth, and we hang out together down here. He's divorced, and his favorite place is Sandbar, which is a nightclub, I don't know if any of you have ever been there, up in Cocoa Beach at 5:20. Well, he called me one day down, he says, "Man, you won't believe it, we've got the greatest place down here, it's right next to your place, you're going to love it." I said, "What's that?" He goes, "Oh, man, they built this beautiful outdoor bar, they got music, it's hopping, man, it's hopping." I said, "Wow, man, that sounds like fun, I'll meet you down there." So I came down, but that was the next night I was going to go with him to the Squid Lips. I went on my back terrace, and I got the radio playing. Not really, it's Squid Lips playing. And it's as if I have my radio turned all the way up, and I want to listen to it, and I'm sitting there trying to talk to my wife, till 10 o'clock at night, or whenever it was, I got to listen to the radio. After 15 or 20 minutes, I came inside, I said, "I can't sit out there with you now, I got to sit inside." So with that venue that they have there, it's a nightclub, if you look up the definition nightclub, and it's noise, and you hear it all the time. All of you who live in a house, if 70 feet away from you, somebody had a wedding every night with 200 people in a band, a five-piece band, you would get a little tired after the second night, and you wouldn't be able to enjoy your backyard. Well, we got to plan our time, we got to go before 2:00 in the afternoon on Saturdays. If you're going to show yourself as a realty date, don't bring them here when the music playing, because no one's going to want to buy your place. That's the real problem we have to live with if that continues. Okay, so what are zoning laws for? They're to regulate the use of property for health, safety, comfort, and welfare of the citizens. I thank God for zoning laws, and I thank God for people that will uphold zoning laws. It was said earlier today that words need to be used as they were intended to be used. And the non-conforming zoning that was done well over four or five years prior to Squid Lips purchasing his property, thought it out very well, and they made it 60 people on the patio, because they know the sound cannot be dissipated over the water. And you can't have sound like that of a nightclub, a five-piece band, roaring out rock music or whatever you can in the neighborhood, because people aren't going to be able to go in their backyards. One of our resident's husband has hard of hearing, and they're in the building right next to the property, and he had to sit inside of his house and wear a headset to block the noise out so he could read. That's how loud it was. The zoning has been enforced for well over four years before they bought the property, and Banana River had no reasonable expectation, when the property was purchased, that they could extend that seating over 60. They had no reasonable expectation for that. And it's proven by the fact that he did that extension and building all that stuff without building permits, because he had no reasonable expectation that the building permits would be given to him. He chose to do that. Now he's coming back like a bully, trying to shove it down our throat by threatening the county, and the county says, I think I read it in there, "We don't like to litigate, we'd rather settle." Well, that's a bully issue, I think I read it in that, I don't know who said that, but I don't like that attitude, because for me, as a citizen, I don't want to listen to that music all the time. It really saddens me. So allowing this expansion to 200 or so people out on this patio is unreasonable. It would be a public and private nuisance, and it would prevent the peaceful use and enjoyment of my property. And any one of you should think about it if it was right next door to you, and you would feel the same way. Thank you.
Chris Conine and Scott Washburn will be next.
Thank you, Chairman, and thanks for your donation this weekend, and it looks good on you. I'm here to speak on behalf of the organization Squid Lips and another restaurateur, a friend of mine, and just someone I've come to know as having solid integrity and character, someone I've collaborated with on several nonprofits now, and I don't know this person, the owners and organization of Squid Lips, to be a partying kind of nightclub. Their current locations I go to, the music is over at 11 o'clock, or even earlier sometimes, and it's not every night of the week. So I hear a lot of exaggeration in the group, I hear a lot of emotions, and I'm here just to speak on the character and integrity of Mr. Underhill, and support the mediation that you all are trying to work out.
Thank you. Scott Washburn's not here. Henry Nelson.
I would say that I support Dr. Underhill, that he has undertaken thirty years.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Sherri Nelson.
I'm the other half, and I also support, what stands out to me is the mediation.
Ma'am, if you're going to say more than just "I support him," I need you up here at the microphone. And Barbara Shulov, Shlarf, will be next.
What stands out to me?
Sherri, would you name your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Sherri Nelson. My address is 8580 Eden Isles Lane, Merritt Island. What just jumps out at me is this is a mediation settlement agreement between the county and between what we're now calling Squid Lips, Banana River Front, I believe. And that's all I have to say. I think it's gone way off and left field all over the place.
And next will be Barbara, and after Barbara, Zach Potter.
Hi, my name is Barbara Slarff. I live at Magnolia Bay at 2022 Julip Drive, 203. I've been a South Cocoa Beach resident my entire time in Brevard County, which is almost 25 years now. I have lived even further south from Magnolia Bay. That is a very unique part of the county, it's narrow, it's very quaint and quiet, that's why I choose to live there, and most of my friends live in South Cocoa Beach, and that's why they choose to live there. I'm a real estate broker, I have two Century 21 offices, one in Cocoa Beach and one in Melbourne. And the only reason I bring that up is because all day long, I'm looking at property values and, you know, highest and best use of property. And I've listed and sold quite a few of these Magnolia Bay properties and other condos and homes in the city, mostly on the beaches. And the residents choose to live there because it's quaint and quiet. And I've been at Magnolia Bay for five years, I love it. When the party scene started happening next door, I stopped going on my porch, and I said, "If this continues, I'm going to have to sell, and I'll sell at a loss if I have to," which is, if you were in that position, I think you would be pretty frustrated. You know, I'm a small business owner, I've owned the company a little under three years, it's been an enormous amount of work, so I respect any small business owner, you know, what it takes to do that, but I've also built out and renovated properties, and I've done it with permits. I understand there's been a lot of work done without permits, and I have a problem with that. When I've had my projects stopped and stalled due to permitting issues, and there's, Squid Lips has plenty of history with restaurants, so they know the drill. I won't go into the other issues that our residents, I support everything they've said. I am concerned about the increased domino effect, if commercial, if this is allowed, if the zoning is allowed to change. Decreased property values, most of the properties in South Cocoa Beach are 400,000 and up. We have some very high-end properties, and I don't think that crowd supports that party atmosphere, it doesn't fit, it just, flat out, does not fit. And just one more note, I did speak to Chart House recently, they have 40 outdoor seats, that's a profitable, successful restaurant. Squid Lips can be, you know, I'm sorry, they're not, you know, we don't support them having 100, 200-plus seats outside, but they can run a successful, nice restaurant that is profitable. They knew what they were getting into, and now they want to change it, and they're saying, "Poor me," they're sending out emails saying, "We're trying to shut them down." We were excited to have a restaurant next door to walk to, but when it became party central, that's not why we live there. So I just respectfully ask that you help us. It's, you know, it's been very upsetting for me, I've sold a lot of these properties at Magnolia Bay in good faith, and, you know, it's hard, so, thank you.
Zach Potter. Robert Sullivan, if you'd come up and have a seat.
Yeah, hello, my name's Zach Potter. I live at 1550 Bay Shore Drive, Cocoa Beach, I'm here representing Snug Harbor. I feel like this entire argument has been mischaracterized. I strongly oppose the agreement being considered. Mr. Underhill's done a good job of characterizing it as basically a big government trying to shut down his small business. I believe, more than anything, more than the sound, more than anything that's been discussed, this is about being a county that does things the right way, standing up for small businesses that do things the right way. He has a history of doing things the wrong way, if you go back and look at his history with the City of Melbourne, which is not on record with the county as much, he's had a long history of issues with zoning and planning there. He's effectively asking to be rezoned without He's effectively asking to be rezoned without being rezoned by being a grandfathered-in, non-conforming property and changing what he is, now changing his footprint. He will effectively now be a full commercial property. He's asking essentially for a bailout by his neighbors. He's gone and he's done things that, you know, he sought for his own profits and is now asking the neighborhood and you guys to bail him out and say, "Hey, you know, I made a mistake. I spent a lot of money. Don't cost me all that money. Don't make me pull that out." And I'm one of the few young people here, especially probably the only young person here, opposing this. And I'm here in support of land use. I'll be in this county probably for the next 80 years, dealing with the decisions and the ramifications of everything that you guys choose to do today. And I want to speak specifically to the new members of the board. This is a very conservative county. I'm proudly, very strongly conservative. And I feel that this issue might get politicized and that some of the newer conservative members might falsely vote in favor of the small business here as cover, saying, "I'm pro-business. I'm anti-government." In reality, this is something that relates to the foundation of modern conservatism, which modern conservatism, in my opinion, is based on the 10th Amendment, which is all about support of local government, you know. In the Constitution, it says, "What is not here will be governed by the states." And it is all about representation of the people and the local people being able to determine their own future and their destiny. And so I think it's very important here that the community came out in full force in opposition to this before. The local, you all have done your job and voted against rezoning this property. And I strongly urge you to stand again with that decision and oppose this effective rezoning. So, thank you.
Robert Sullivan and Bob Boger will be next.
Hello, my name is Robert Sullivan. I live at 2205 South Atlantic, which is directly across from the Squid Lips restaurant. So I have an obvious situation here. My first thought is taking a look again this morning at Squid Lips. If you look at the structure that has been built there, number one, it's quite amazing to me that it's 4,100 square feet with a huge roof illegally built without a permit. And if it wasn't for Bob saying something, it just would have carried on. Whose job is that to stop? It's not like that was done under the cover of the night. I mean, 4,100 square feet with an amphitheater-like roof, which reminds me of the structure in West Palm Beach, it just doesn't have the 20,000 people seated outside in the river. It's a huge structure and it's there and nobody pulled a permit for it. Anyways, we all know what happened in the last vote, but I want to specifically talk with, I happened to go to Mr. Barfield's office and was there and I thought we were just meeting with Mr. Barfield, but it turns out the representatives of the county, Scott, you were there, concerning this agreement that had been made between Squid Lips and the county. They spoke mainly about the noise issue in that they spoke about, well, Lobster Shand was technically able to have music 24 hours a day and they were in good faith, Scott, that was a word you used, cutting them down to four hours a day, four days a week, and then eight hours a day the other three days, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, maybe off by an hour there. And then I asked him the question, "Well, what about occupancy? I mean, how many people are allowed to sit out there?" That was my concern. I mean, is this a concert venue or is this dining with music in the background? It seems to me it's a concert venue. It's built like a concert venue, looks like a concert venue. It is a concert venue. I don't know if it's a nightclub, I don't know if it's a day club, but it's built for music and for people to enjoy music outside, not really built for a restaurant, as well as it's not like that when you go there. Anyways, one comment I wanted to make to you, Scott, you know, I was sort of surprised to see you there, but you said to me, you kept saying, "In good faith," you had to give something in this mediation process. And you said that in good faith you were cutting down the hours. I wondered, "In good faith, could you not help?" Because I'd like to see him run a restaurant. I don't have a problem with him personally. Can't you in good faith potentially give him tax credit for the storm drainage? He owes so much in taxes, why don't you make some of that count towards his taxes? That would be you giving something in good faith instead of us, the neighborhood, having to give something when it comes to the quantity of the people that are going to come here. I mean, Buzz wants to have as many people out there as possible. He wants people drinking. He wants people out there enjoying. He wants it as often as he possibly can. He doesn't live there and I respect any business owner to want to make as much money as possible, but that's his goal. I mean, it's so obvious. Anyways, on top of myself, I represent my immediate neighbors, Malcolm Kirschenbaum, Jim Swan, Kit Knotts, as well as Jan Zana could not make it here today. And I don't know if you two guys that were here last time, how important Jan's project is, which is just to the south of Bob Boger's project. And he has 14, you know, very expensive condos going in there, roughly about $1 million apiece. And his comment last time was, "Well, wow, I mean, I bought this property. I'm developing it with a restaurant next door, not a concert venue. And this greatly affects who I can sell to." So again, we live there. We potentially have to deal with what the ex-officer had to say and I thought it was to the point. I mean, the reality of this situation is it gets very much closer to a Coconuts Beach Act situation. There's drunkenness going on and that's fine. They see the cops, they see the flashing light, the extra law enforcement that needs to be brought. They hang around, they go to the beach. There's crime in that area, a lot of crime actually lately. My personal house was broken into last week. Someone broke in in the middle of the day, took a cell phone, stole a gun, took an Apple TV. My neighbor was broken into. The traffic situation is huge difference. I mean, there's parking on my side of the street, there's parking on the other side. It's just people want to come to see a concert, they get out of their car, they get to the concert on time. That's what you do. So that was happening.
Mr. Sullivan, you have 30 seconds.
All right. Anyways, my problem was with the agreement that was drawn up. It didn't seem like the homeowners in the area were represented. I was never notified. None of us were notified when this agreement was between you and Squid Lips and you were supposedly protecting our interests, I guess, but I didn't see anything in this agreement that really protects the immediate neighbors of this situation. And to me, the key issue is outside occupancy. How many people are allowed to sit outside and watch these things? If it gets up to 200, 300, 400 people, it's a concert venue. If it's down to the original 60 people, which he bought, maybe give him 25%. Get it up to 75 people. No one wants to shut this restaurant down. Just don't want an outdoor concert venue. That's it.
Courtney Yellis, next.
Bob Boger, 118 Sunset. I'm a immediate property owner to the south. I have just shy of three acres. I've owned it since 1987. I have, I'm one of the largest taxpayers on the barrier around Cocoa Beach and Cape Canaveral. I have mixed views on this. One view is that I'm a property rights advocate. I bought my property a long time ago. Half of it is zone commercial, half of it is zone residential. As it sits today, it's a residential piece, but the comprehensive plan allows me to have mixed use and go back. So one of my options is a restaurant and I have talked to some brand restaurants about that location. So my other issue I have here is what the neighbors have all said. This was a mixed-use neighborhood. It has, over the last 10 years in the last boom, it has switched a little bit more to the condominium use. That was the highest and best value. But we have multiple restaurants. We already lost one to the condo to the south, which is now stalled and has been stalled for six or seven years. So I do not want to lose any rights that I have paid for and been operating because an operator. I always say it's not what you do, but how you do it. Now, we've had some really serious issues with this operator and I was the first one to fight him because we have a parking issue. And the parking issue is what I got in a fight over and it was a legal expansion of the restaurant. And I asked him to deal with it and he refused to deal with it, so he told me to deal with it. So I dealt with it and how I dealt with it is I put pressure on the county and since I'm a developer myself, I knew all the issues because I watched it. So I put the pressure on to stop this and I brought this to the head. At the same time, I have always made my money in tourism and this county cannot afford to give up any more commercial property on the water. So this thing is really an operational issue, okay? How it's being operated. So you guys got your hands full here because I'm on both sides of the fence. I don't want you to hurt tourism. We need waterfront restaurants. We need the operators to operate in the community that they are, so that means they have to be respective to the area. So there is not an easy answer here, but don't destroy waterfront restaurants because of a bad operator because this county needs them, okay? Tourism needs them and we paid the tax dollars to have them. So I don't have a solution here today. I read the agreement. There are some very strong things in there. Parking should be in there too. Right now, that area is having sidewalks put in, so the big deal before was they were parking on the right of ways. Soon as the sidewalks go in, that will block it from parking. The other issue here is law enforcement. We are having a mailing address of Cocoa Beach, but we're in the county. You know what that means? We're in no man's land. That means it takes a half hour to 45 minutes and sometimes longer to get a response. Why? Because if it's not a life and death response, it's low priority. Okay? So I've had responses in my neighborhood that took over an hour because they were low priority. What was low priority? A break-in, okay? An hour for a break-in, not sure if that person was in the building. So this is a very tough issue, but don't destroy the property rights issue because of a bad operator. Hopefully, he can clean up and answer these people's questions. Thank you.
Courtney Yellis and Michael Mason will be next.
Thank you for having us here. My name's Courtney Yell. I live at 2001 Julip Drive in Cocoa Beach in the Magnolia Bay condo. We've been, my wife and I have been, come out of Cocoa Beach for many years and chose, when they built Magnolia Bay about 10 years ago, we were one of the first occupants there. And we love it. It's great. And I've heard a lot of discussion about issues that have come up. And I'm not going to repeat all those, but I echo that same sentiment. However, yesterday, I was listening to my favorite radio station, 99.3, and I heard an advertisement for Squid Lips. Any of you hear it? Anyone else? No. You listen to 99.3? Okay. In effect, that advertisement stated that Squid Lips is a resort with excitement every day. And it ends with a statement. Manners are optional. I was really distressed to hear that. Manners are optional. Wow. You mean to say the clientele have an option to not to have good manners? I don't think so. And I have a five-minute issue here and what I would like to do is allow Sal Bate to, I will yield the rest of my time to Sal Bate, who has more to go. You're not going to allow that. He didn't finish and he has some excellent things to say. So I'll close and say that I wholeheartedly deny, ask you to deny the acceptance of this change.
Michael Mason and Al Abasi will be next.
I'm Michael Mason. I live at 1754 Bay Shore Drive in Cocoa Beach. I live in Snug Harbor. I do want to relinquish my time to Sal because I do believe he has some valuable points to make to finish up on his presentation. But my only comment and question is to you, Mr. Knotts. When are you going to disseminate the results of the mitigation package that you negotiated to the residents of Cocoa Beach and to Brevard County? Because I haven't seen what you've negotiated. And will you take public comments once you do disseminate that mitigation package?
Sir, this isn't a Q and A. It's a comment period only.
Okay. He's free to answer the question. When are you going to disseminate the mitigation package? Because I've been, I heard the results of it, the highlights, but I haven't seen it. I've been on the county website. It's not there. I think you have an obligation to disseminate the mitigation package to the residents.
Is that your comment?
Yes, my comment.
Okay. Thank you. Al Abasi, Charles Tarry.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to talk for a moment. I'm Al Abasi, 200 International Drive, Cape Canaveral. It's a pretty tense issue that you all have to deal with, but it really comes down to just really a couple of things. You have a mediated settlement that was handled, that was done in the best interest of the community and the business. And it appears that the owners of Banana Riverfront have a few violations. You have operations in place to deal with them. If they violate it, they have to pay fines. It's that simple. But they also have an agreement within the community to do business and to provide jobs. It's a great economic impact that this organization will be bringing to the community, mostly jobs. The downriver effect of that is the services from the other companies that supply them, the jobs that they provide. It's a lot to think about. Not only to think about that, but also to allow people to operate a business. And that's what the local economy is all about. How many more businesses do we want? How many more businesses do we need? How many businesses provide more jobs? To arbitrarily take away because of really the whole issue to me, sounds like noise. The music's too loud. That's been the predominant statement that's come about. So put the decibel limits in place and allow them to operate their business. If they don't, they can always be shut down. If they're a good business, they will operate and cooperate within the community to provide for that community and to allow themselves to profit and everybody to enjoy their offerings. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Charles Tovey. Jessica Brusso, next.
Charles Tovey, 2555 Roberts Road, Melbourne. I have personal interest in Squid Lips. I used to watch the Firecrackers on my birthday from the old hotel and respect any community that moved in there and they have opportunity to benefit the lagoon and the community more so than what they're doing. And I have an alternative. If this plan's not approved, that possibly they could get a vessel, a vessel that floats from Tuam Fro, Cape Canaveral, back down with the band and all the food and then they won't be stationary there and they'll be able to clean the river environmentally. And that's what I'm looking for is a partnership between Squid Lips and our lagoon council and the rest of the community. I do have some other issues about the library in the park. Whether the library's closed or hours, it's difficult to find a parking space. And also I wanted to, which has no reflection on Squid Lips, they can't control the people that enter or the behavior. The intoxicating people that are walking the streets without looking and that's a busiest intersection and the lights go out and all the other issues. And I'm going to keep it short and the rest of the stuff I'll discuss with Mr. Woodard. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Commissioners. Jessica Brusso, 1700 South Atlantic Avenue, Unit 206 in Cocoa Beach. I'm in the interesting position that I am obviously an employee at Squid Lips and also a neighbor. I live within a quarter mile of Squid Lips. So, let's see. I started a year ago at Squid Lips. I've managed to make it through and one of the last few people that are still there, kind of hanging in there. I'm a single mom of two. I am also an adjunct professor of science. I teach online. So this allows me to be a mother to two almost six-year-olds and work. Obviously, this has severely impacted my own income. Obviously, this has severely impacted my own income as well as many others. I don't even know how many people lost their jobs when we had to close down the deck, but it was, I don't know, it had to be at least 100 people, it feels like, and even more since then. I have read through the plan that was approved at the Planning and Zoning Meeting back in September of 2016. We've just lost so much job revenue, so much employment tax, business tax, there's so much that the county has lost in that, besides just Squid Lips itself. So if you guys could think of that and think of all the people that, the constituents that live in your area that rely on this for their income, for their families, not only that, but the community of South Cocoa Beach, there are so many people that may not live right next door, but that would like to have this to come and bring a boat in and enjoy the weekend and enjoy the weekdays. Patrick Air Force Base is just down the street. We used to have so many servicemen that would come in for lunch and it was great. And I've talked to people before that are members of our community now that used to be living at Patrick Air Force Base, that's how they got here, that said when they were on the base, there was nothing. They had to go south. They, you know, they had to go to another town instead of coming out, you know, to the north and having a nice place to go. So I think this would better everybody. And if we could adhere to those, if the business could adhere to what was brought forth during that Planning and Zoning Meeting, I don't see that, that would be a problem, given those parameters. If there are noise violations after that, then that's another thing that could be looked at. But if we can reopen and meet all those qualifications, I don't see a problem with that. I know the concerns about the security in the area. It is kind of no man's land because, you know, if there is an issue, we have to wait for a officer, a deputy to get there. Perhaps private security could be looked at during the busiest hours. So that would be another option perhaps for the business. But I'm hoping that for the community, for those of us who work there or, and just want to enjoy the atmosphere, even when you're not there, not working there. So hopefully you guys can take that into consideration.
Mr. Underell.
Buzz Underell, Banana Riverfront, 490 North Harbor City Boulevard. First of all, I'd like to, I thank everybody that showed up here to support us. I know it's a, you know, we had a lot of other things to do today and it just, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for taking the time and the effort. Thank you so much.[1478.82][1478.82](APPLAUSE) You know, we had the opportunity, we were only open for about six weeks. We had some issues during that time. We acknowledge that, we have always acknowledged that. We had some sound issues, we had some other problems. We have never denied that. We had an opportunity, Sam Shake had mentioned to my attorney if we'd be willing to meet with them. We weren't asked to do it by anybody else and I said I'd be happy to meet with the folks with, at Magnolia Bay. So in August, after we'd been closed a number of months, I sat down and met with them and I acknowledged the fact that we had some sound issues and that we were going to do what we needed to do to get the sound in line. You know, the one we have in Melbourne is very similar. We're actually physically closer to the Pineapple House, which are upscale condos than we are to Magnolia Bay. We had the same issue there and I sat down with some of the owners of their units there and I said, "We're going to solve the problem." And we solved the problem. We solved the problem with sound blankets, we sounded with sound engineers that came in and told us how to do what we needed to do so that we would not be a disturbance to the Pineapple House. We did it without the compulsion, the requirement of the city of Melbourne or anybody else. And I had given my word that I would do the same thing to Magnolia Bay. The problem that we have had is we have not had the opportunity to perform. And I've heard a number of these folks say here that we didn't do this, we didn't do that. We have never had the ability to sit down and to find out whether or not I would perform on what I said I would do. Magnolia Bay, if you go back and you look at the, if you look at any code complaints with Magnolia Bay and the city of Melbourne for the last three years, you could probably go further than that, we went back for the last three years, you'll not find one single solitary call on a noise disturbance, not one single solitary call. So, you know, what this settlement does, it allows us to, one, get things permitted that were not properly permitted. If there's some deficiency in any of the construction, it gives us the ability to rectify that problem and it allows us the opportunity to do what we say we're going to do and that is to comply with the noise ordinance of the county. And this agreement, I don't like a lot of the provisions in the agreement because I think they're very difficult and they're very tough, but I have agreed to them. We will be governed by those and we'll operate within that. But nobody else in the county gets fined $500 for the first violation of noise, $2,500 for the second violation of noise, and $5,000 for the third violation of noise. Nobody does that. And I can tell you that there's not that much profit in having a ban there. You know, it's there because people define it. And we've heard a lot of folks out here talk about, talk about the number of people, unlimiting the number of people. The issue is not the number of people. If I put 300 people out there and they're all doing yoga, there would be no problem because there's no interference. The issue is a noise issue. And I think that this settlement agreement adequately addresses a solution for whatever, a remedy for whatever might happen in the event that we exceed whatever the noise ordinance is of the county. I've heard a number of discussions here about changing the zoning. We are not asking to change the zoning. You know, that was something that we had done, that was turned down by the board, we're fine with that. We have the ability to continue operating the way we are now. There's no restriction other than the county noise ordinance for us to do music and meet the certain decibel. If I was to take down the deck, I could continue to pour the runoff into the lagoon like they've done since 1925. We don't have an obligation to mitigate any of that, which we've agreed to do. We can play the music much more than the hours that I've agreed to and we're not limiting the number of the people that are out there. So I think even though this isn't a perfect settlement that doesn't address everybody's interest, I think that what it does is that it certainly mitigates any inconvenience, any problems that we might cause, not on purpose, we might cause to the Magnolia Bay folks. You know, we had, we had one of the individuals in here, I think Mr. Burner, that was a little disingenuous talking about the calls, the police calls in Melbourne. Yes, if you look at that, you'll actually see, if you take it back from about last week, you'll see 71 calls. But it's important to recognize that that goes on the street address. And that street address is that intersection of Pineapple and Anorgali Boulevard. So anything that takes place in that area gets tagged to our address.
You have 30 seconds.
Okay. If you will look at that, you'll see that there was one assault and that was unfounded. You'll have two disturbance fights, both of those were domestic, and that's over the last 24 months. The rest of them were reckless driving, repossession of cars and some other stuff on it. So you will see that, you know, even though he would like for you to believe that there's all kinds of fights and stuff going on, if you're really looking to drill down on it, you'll see that is not the case. All right, thank you.[1758.37][1758.37](APPLAUSE)
Okay, we're going to take a 10-minute break so SGTV can change their equipment and get